All right, we're gonna call, not to order, but we're gonna, we're gonna do public hearing at 6:30, scheduled for 6:30 with the Lemmister Planning Board. Continue to open public hearing for special permit floodplain, 68, 70, and 72 Pleasant Street, map 14, houses 19, 3, and 3A, multifamily residential above floors with office on first floor.
All right, the applicant has requested to be continued to March 3rd.
Do I move to continue this to March 3rd at 6:30? Sorry. Yes, 6:30?
6:30.
6:30. Okay, because they still haven't received anything on the...
It's coming.
The mapping, right? Yeah, yeah. Do they need anything else to keep it going or just the extensions over the public?
Just as long as you continue it, and they got their extension, their 90-day extension, they requested that in writing and...
What's your name on the phone?
Yeah, they want a floodplain thing. All right, so let's just continue the hearing.
So we just need to vote?
We need a roll call.
But we need a roll call, because John's on the phone, so.
Roll call vote, Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Caravita Torrioso, excused, Tom Kergnen.
Yeah.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes. Okay, motion passes, continue at 6:30 on, what was the date?
Murder, murder.
Very much, wow. Unreal. Okay, call to order, regular meeting.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Here.
John Souza.
Yes, yes.
Caravita Torrioso, excused, Tom Kergnen.
Yeah.
Jason Parre.
Here.
Dean Valier.
Here.
Sal Chaconi.
Here.
All right, minutes of previous meeting, 202.1 is December 9th, 2024.
And move to approve the minutes?
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes for December 9th. Roll call vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Caravita Torrioso, excused, Tom Kergnen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes. Okay, minutes of the meeting of December 16th, 2.2, 2024.
Can I move to approve those minutes?
Second. Motion made and seconded.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Caravita Torrioso, excused, Tom Kergnen. Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes. Okay, 3.0, plans submitted. 3.1, 81L, lot division 53 and 57, Liberty Street, map 143, lot 220.
All right, just, you probably are aware, but in your packet, I wrote a memo on this. And then the vice chair, who's not here tonight, reviewed the case and wrote a memo. And legal counsel wrote a communication on this too. And you have that. So I don't know if you, Chair, do you want the applicant to present, or do you want to read the letters, or what do you want to do first?
Uh, look, let's present, so we all get a better understanding of what's going on. That'd be a good thing.
Are you here representing?
Yes.
For the record, your name?
Attorney Jeff Avini. So I submitted a package to your planner, and just as a matter of record, I didn't, I would start a copy of...
What do you need, sorry, the plan, if they, you know how you pull out the A and R plans?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. I will, I'll pass this out as your...
Sure. Just, I didn't see a copy of the vice chair's memo, or I didn't see a copy of KP's memo. So can I get a copy of yours, please?
Yeah.
Put a vice name down before I walk in and...
Yeah, the board just started tonight, so nobody had them in...
For the lots?
No.
We ask for special permit.
Sure, so this is an exemption under the statute, 81L is an exemption, it's in the
definitional section, so because of the lots and the building structure they have before, Lemmister adopted subdivision control and zoning, it's exempt. So it's a division, it's not a subdivision. Is the Tom solicitor's memo also included?
Um... Amy Quassel, right there.
So you have a suit of those yet either?
No, it's okay.
That's all right, yeah. I have it, you're gonna need those, just hold it.
Whenever you're ready.
I mean, I think I pretty much said what I'm gonna say. So we're just asking for a division under 81L.
Elizabeth, your concern was that it doesn't need the zoning to do it.
The lots created do not meet zoning, no. They have the frontage, but the lot size does not meet...
Either one of them?
No.
So he's breaking it, it's two non-conforming lots.
And the building commissioner has...
But he's saying it's exempt from it.
I'll deal with the building commissioner and the zoning issues as separate matters. So I'm not really on that tight...
Yeah, if this is created, they're subject to code enforcement by the building commissioner.
Maybe.
Well, as long as you know they're subject to...
I'll deal with the folks, I'm right there.
Then I have no problem.
Yeah. I think the note you're looking for is already in the plan, and I've got the, I got the MyLog here, which has the note on it, I think they asked for.
This doesn't have the language, though, that was requested.
He intended his plans for separate lots.
It should be on the right, it's on the right-hand side.
We're not saying we're just dividing the lot.
Yes, exactly.
So it's chapter 41, 81L?
Yeah, it's right up, it's right above the signature block. It's a, it's not a custody of finding, it's a...
Sell the houses, try to buy one.
I don't remember doing this, that's all.
One of the houses was built 1910, the other one was built 1926, I think.
Correct.
I get it. No, no.
Yeah, that's what's his home.
Amazing, they're before you were on the board.
For me.
Good job.
If they can't have kids, I believe.
Age is a killer, watch out, Paul. Age is a killer. Okay, so what's the board thinking here? I'm still looking for our attorney's letter.
Do you want it, Sal, I have it right here.
Yeah, thank you.
There's an email from Peter Niall that was in your packet, too.
Well, all we gotta do is put that note on it.
And it's on, it's there.
It's on mine, all right?
And it's on these copies too?
I don't have any problems.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to deal with it.
And the building inspector says there is no legal order to split this lot into...
That's why we got the city solicitor opinion.
And she disagrees.
That is the city solicitor's opinion.
That's the building inspector's.
Building inspector's.
Can I get a copy of that email, too?
Yep.
The building inspector's email?
Yeah.
As long as you know the...
No way.
I'll deal with it. It's okay.
You got it?
Yeah.
It's like a shared driveway. It does, but it's like a shared driveway.
Well, a plan, if you notice, there's another driveway created.
Yeah, I was looking for that on here, looking at the GIS.
It's not in there yet, right?
Yeah, it's not gonna be there.
I don't think the driveway's in here.
And so Carol's view is, we're compelled to endorse it, so I would move if we endorse it, unless it has the note, which it does, so.
Second. Okay, any comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, so we have a motion on the table.
Second.
Made by Paul, made by Tom.
Did I hear?
Oh, by Jason, excuse me. John, excuse me, John?
Question, I'm on the halftime here. Did the, did the notice put on the drawing?
Yes.
Yes. The notation's on the drawing, John. It's on the MyLog, correct?
Yes, but, um...
On each one?
On each one. Yeah, it's on the copy we just looked at on this side, so I'm assuming the others are the same.
Yes.
It's on mine.
The only caveat is, and it's in my memo, is that you endorse it contingent upon or the condition that all the property owners sign the application. We don't have the signed application with all the property owners yet.
Well, you have a copy, you have a copy.
We don't have an original. We need an original.
So add that as a...
Okay, so we'll add that as, to the motion as a condition?
Absolutely. That's what I thought.
And a roll call?
So we're gonna add that as a condition, as...
The condition that the original signatures of all owners are...
In the motion.
...with the application.
Okay, we have a motion on the table by Paul, condition, and seconded by Jason for approval with the correct notation, and also, oh, with the condition. Okay, roll call, vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Caravita Torrioso, excused, Tom Kergnen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
All right, we'll contact you tomorrow.
I gave her the original MyLars, I think it's written in that stack right there.
It wasn't given earlier?
You asked that he change it to 1,000 feet, so they re-give the MyLog.
Oh, did you make the MyLog and four copies?
I don't believe he did. If you want, I will get the full...
Did you get them in the morning, or, we could sign them when we get them.
Yeah, I don't know if I'll get them tomorrow, but he just dropped off the MyLog yesterday.
Okay.
You just sent out the memo, so he just produced the MyLog.
Okay, so this is, this is the correct MyLog?
That should be the correct MyLog. That's the only MyLog I have, and the other one was just...
This is the one you just gave me, the new?
Just gave you the correct MyLog.
Okay, we'll take that. And then you'll bring back the copies, and when you bring them back, we'll give you the old ones.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you. Good luck. Okay, that was nice. Okay, now on to new business. 5.1.
None.
None. To Communications, 6.1, that's City Council, I'm assuming, the CC.
Yeah.
Petition 24-25, Thomas M. Vivenzi Esquire on behalf of Steve Boucher, request to amend the zoning district map, 29 June Street, map 352, parcel 6, such that the entire parcel will be zoned residence be, since a portion is currently zoned industrial. Planning Board to schedule a public hearing.
So March 3rd?
6:30.
6:30.
Okay, March 3rd, 6:35. Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Tom Kergnen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes. Okay, 6.2, modification of site plan application, 135 Commercial Road, map 57, parcel 1, Home Depot. Board to vote whether this is a minor or major modification. This is a minor modification, the case will be reviewed under Communications. If it's a major modification, it will be scheduled for future offer, public meeting date, Planning Board to vote accordingly.
Do you have a computer that you want to hook up to the...
This is the time of the season, actually. That's pretty long.
All right, I'm gonna need help. Jason, you're the one who's against it. Let me make sure. Hold on, I want to...
It's a great question. So I just, you know, you posed just a quick question.
What's your moment?
This is, is this a modification to what's previously submitted, or is it the same as we know it's gonna be?
It's different this year.
It's a different, I mean, it's in a five spaces.
The period is longer. It's up by God. I think it's a larger number.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Watch that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
We should turn it on, huh?
Turn it on.
That'd be nice. And could you stick, could you also state your name and position for the record?
My name is Alejandro Barca, I'm a development manager at Greenberg Fargo.
I think you have to push the down button. Or there can be...
Not there, I'm gonna pay a cash. There we go.
Down, did you press down?
I think that should go away on the phone.
Yeah, I'd like it to go away on the phone.
Oh, I pressed down.
Oh, come on.
It's, uh...
It's one, one, send you up.
Let's go to YouTube.
Okay.
We're already seeing everybody. PC on TV, man.
It's the unknown.
We'll figure it out.
Is that gonna know how to go?
That's it.
Professional.
There you go. It was the one before that. It's the unknown. Here you go. Go to the unknown. That's it.
Unknown, for those of you watching at home.
No, not that.
I'm sorry.
Go to unknown, right next to it. That's it, that's the one.
Do I hit this?
Everybody get out.
See how good we are with technology? Really good.
All right, what do we do to get that down?
There you go. Oh, we need a TV remote.
Press the down button right now.
Yeah, that's where I got the down button thing from.
There you go. Nice.
Good job, Elizabeth.
That probably took longer than you planned.
I'm terrible.
Okay, remember, considering whether this is a minor or major modification right now, to me...
No.
Elizabeth, you have the, the numbers on, what was, oh, I don't remember.
I have what was approved last, I have a notice of decision from last year.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read, or do you want me to give it to you?
Let's read it for the record, how many we approved and how long the period is.
Well, there was a total of 99 spaces proposed for outdoor storage and display. This is in addition to 44 spaces that were previously approved, we utilized for outdoor storage, staging, and display, as well as non-parking areas along the side and rear of the building. This is last year. The applicant seeks to reduce the total parking provided by an additional 44 spaces for a total of 364 spaces available to service the business.
That was last year.
That was last year.
And time period?
And that was, was it March?
March 15th to August 1st.
So August 15th?
August 1st.
August 1st.
Correct.
Okay, so I just figured I'd get that, all right?
No, that's fine.
It helped you out.
Yep, the areas that we're showing here on the plan is Area 1, for the next of the Garden Center. This is an existing seasonal sales area of those spaces, previously approved. And we also have Area 2, 14 spaces, and the new location that we're adding is this one over here, Area 3, 5 spaces.
Can you always put things on Area 14, then?
Yes.
You always have stuff.
Of course, but we do come for every year for this approval.
And those are all the ones we come for every year, and you're just adding the ones...
Just adding those?
Of course. By any extent, by any extent.
And that's the only change? And the time, does there a time period change on that?
Yes, March 15th to October 1st.
Okay, so...
Seven months.
That's a pretty big difference.
October 1st.
Since August to October.
And the reason is, here in the New England territory, is outdoor products, outdoors, you know, outdoor projects take longer, people start working on the projects later on in the year.
Yeah.
That's the reason why we need the extra, extra time.
It's always worked out, they've always...
It's more than half a year.
Very cooperative with us.
Well, how long was it, Russia?
It was from March 1st to August 1st.
To August 1st. So it's three extra months.
Three extra months.
Two, two extra months.
Two extra months, because now it's minus 15. Yeah. And it's just those, but, but, you're always busy anyway.
So it's quarter and a half spaces.
And that's just, so how shy are we in giving a fight about...
The only difference is the time.
The time.
How shy are we in giving a fight about...
In my memo, it reports on the market requirement?
So total spaces for 18...
194 places were supposed to be...
This will show the 2021 approval, which was 418.
454 are required.
Are required. 454 are required, and you're at, and you'll be down to what, if we're approved?
359. 359.
100 space reduction?
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
But, but that's, the others were already accounted for.
Previously, there were...
What are we, what are we allowed to...
Right.
Change on parking without a public hearing, such a permit? It's 10 to 30 percent.
I didn't hear what you said.
I don't, you mean a site plan?
Yeah, we're in a site plan.
Or a site plan, 10 more parking spaces trigger a site plan approval.
This isn't 10 more spaces.
But this isn't new spaces, this is a reduction of 10. It doesn't, our ordinance does not specify a reduction, it only specifies adding.
Right, and in 2031, we were...
Yeah, we can reduce, we can reduce.
But John, we approve them every year. Alejandro, what were you approving last year?
And this is being set.
So, help me understand this for a second, I'm sorry. You were talking to add five spaces. How did we go from 406 to 359?
Those are the already, those spaces that they have.
This is from the 2021 approval. We were permitted 418 spaces.
Right.
That's for the permanent, our storage. And also, we were, we were allowed 12 spaces for seasonal sales.
So it got down to 406.
406.
And you said the only thing you're adding here is those five spots in Spot 3. So that should go from 406 to 401.
No, what I meant is, every year, the store comes in for an application for seasonal sales.
They file every year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the previous year, I believe it was 42 spaces requested, now we're asking 47.
And they, this has been going on for...
I take it it's been a while.
Five years.
Quite a while, five years, yeah. And they'd be very good with it. Fire departments always, you leave, you leave a room for fire lanes for the fire departments, is there requirements with all of that?
Yes.
Fire's fine.
Fire's fine? Any other comments from anybody else?
Yeah, our department had comments in your, in front of you.
Yep, everyone of them said, "Fine."
Building said they approved.
Yep.
Health approves.
And you noted the mayor's, so it's a concern, is that resolved?
Hold on, I'll get to that. Public Works had no comments, Spire had no comments, they approved. Assessor's Office says it does not affect the property temporary...
It doesn't affect your taxes.
And then there was, there was a technical review meeting on this on January 29th, and I put that, I usually put that in my memo, but since my memo came out first, and this came out second.
Yeah.
There are, there are comments from technical review. The only one that was concerning was the code enforcement officer said the store's very busy, and there may be an issue with parking with other spaces being used.
But you said it's not applicable, is that his?
No, the...
It's cold consulting, cold consulting comment, unapplicable. So we were talking five spaces here.
The mayor wasn't at the meeting.
From last year.
From last year.
He didn't bring anything to my attention, he received all the information.
Well, you know, he's just doing his job. But, but, we're talking five spaces, is it in the line of sight, or in a bad area, in any way? This is the construction pickup area, correct?
Correct.
Right here.
Yep.
So is it, are these spaces, you know, those spaces are living, pretty open, it's over there anyway, huh?
There's rental pieces there.
Yeah.
It doesn't cause any...
It's five spaces. Okay, I just wanted to point that out, it's all right.
Okay, some of their motion...
Motion, it's a minor modification.
And second.
Okay, we got a motion on the table, and it is a minor modification. Motion by Dean, and second by Jason. Call, the vote, please, roll call.
Continue approval?
What?
Continue approval?
Can we ask for that?
After we determine it's a minor modification.
They're just determining whether it's major or minor.
And that's, yeah.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Tom Kergnen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
So now the second motion would be to actually approve the...
Any waivers?
I mean, a motion to approve.
And there are no waivers, right?
Yes, there's a waiver for parking.
Yeah, there's a waiver from...
Section 2246.
Which is the request.
Requesting 59 parking spaces for outdoor seasonal storage sales for the period of March 15th, October 1st, 2025.
Seconded. Okay, so moved by Tom, seconded by Dean. Did I get that right?
Yep.
Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
John Souza.
I'm lucky, I got it, my luck.
Yes.
Tom Kergnen.
Yes.
Tom Kergnen?
Yeah.
Oh, Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes. Okay, so I think he did have a hundred...
I think he has a request.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Is it possible to ask for a continual approval?
Every year? If there're gonna be changes...
There will be no changes.
I don't know, it's a good question. That's not my decision, you know, that's something we'd have to talk about.
There's no changes.
If there's no changes.
Well, if he has a change, he's gotta come in.
Same time.
You want it perpetual?
We have to, we have to have that. John, you got, you got any thoughts on that?
John, he wants to, did you hear that, John?
What was that?
The applicant wants to know if he can get a perpetual approval for this each, instead of coming back each year, if nothing has changed.
Why don't we just put it for a couple of years?
Yeah, well, we would have to have a hearing on that.
Yeah.
And that's because of a final drawing.
We have a final drawing.
We have a final drawing, John. Why don't we do it for, like, a trial period of three years, unless there's a change?
Yeah, I wanna double check the under, I think we only get, I'm not sure.
We don't know what authority is.
But I think we can only reduce 20% of what's required.
But, but, this is a...
But it might be 30.
This is a seasonal thing.
That's in the audience. But for a temporary, I don't have a problem. If we're gonna make a permit, then I wanna double check that.
Well, the times are still permanent. I mean, the times are still seasonal.
Correct.
You know, it's not, they're not gonna do it year-round.
The timestamp would be March 15th to October 15th.
That's not quite a seasonal thing.
October 1st, excuse me.
October 1st.
Right.
I took pressure from this up there.
So, there is a, you know, there is a stipulation in the agreement.
I, you know, it's up to the board, I'm, I'm just the facilitator tonight.
I don't know what we can do.
But we don't know if we have the authority to do that.
I think the, I think the regulations are silent on that. This isn't, this isn't a case that's not...
Then we should do a permanent there.
I don't think we should have to come back and rest it.
But you should refile the plan, you know, just refile maybe every year.
If everything's not changed, then...
But if nothing's changed, then it just gets filed away as this year's plan.
We have a change.
Maybe we do it for, like, three years to start, and...
But why put a clock?
Right, don't even put a clock.
Put a timeframe on it.
If there's a change, they're coming, otherwise it stays the way it is.
And if there's a problem, then they'll...
We can have Elizabeth put it as...
If there's a problem, the building departments come.
So you can do an inspection. Well, we do, we do periodic inspections to make sure there's, I think, will be mine, will be covered. We have code enforcement now, and he's helping with this.
So can I make the motion, that we make this a...
An annual thing for temporary storage?
No, just a permanent...
Permanent.
Change unless, unless something changes, they don't need to come back and request...
And I'll second that.
Further endorsement of the same plan.
For the specified timeframe.
The proposal we approved today...
And the reduced...
The proposal we approved today should last up until the time where they want to make a change.
Yes. be covered. We have code enforcement now, and he's helping with this.
So can I make the motions as we make this a...
An annual thing for temporary storage?
Just a permanent?
Permanent.
Change unless, unless something changes, they don't need to come back and request?
And I'll second that.
Further endorsement of the same plan?
For the specified timeframe.
The proposal we approved today... The proposal we approved today should last up until the time that they wanna make a change.
Yes.
That's the motion.
I like, that's pretty good.
Alright, sorry.
That was great, that was really good.
Can you say that one more time, 'cause I was writing?
If you approve it, you can't come back every year.
Will stay in effect up until the time that they wanna make a change to it.
Okay.
That's the best way.
No changes, no need to come back.
Or what about if there's a problem?
Then someone...
Well, there's been...
That's not us.
That's not us.
That's the enforcement people.
Yep. Okay. So we have a motion on the table by Paul, seconded by Tom. Roll call, vote please.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
John SZA.
What is the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That we're gonna...
The motion was to approve that they didn't have to come back every year.
Unless there was a change.
Unless there was a change.
Otherwise, this approval lasts until that time.
But they would still have to file the part of the plan every year with the planning board office.
That's just a given.
Yeah, yeah. Well...
And if you see something different, then you gotta say, hey, we have to admit it.
Yep.
Other than that, it's a waste of time.
All right, John, what's the vote?
Roll call. We were in the middle of a roll call. John, SZA.
Staying.
He said staying.
Staying.
Yes, 'cause he doesn't know to stay.
I really don't think we can do, go to more than twenty percent.
Yeah, but this is a seasonal thing.
It's seasonal, that's it.
We already approved it.
Right.
We're just talking about the length of the tongue.
Yeah.
It doesn't change anything about what we approved.
It's true.
Well, five spaces.
But we approved it.
That doesn't get down below twenty percent.
All we're talking now is...
This is seasonal.
Okay, he abstained. Do we...
Tom Kerrigan.
Yes.
No.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Boyer.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
So that's a six...
So just keep it six oh one. They've been great so far.
You still have it, or you're too?
No, they, you guys have always been really good.
No issues.
I approved the area now and then, and you guys have always been really good. So it's a busy area. It's bad you didn't have another sized lot like that, right next door.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, have a good travels back.
Okay, okay. Okay, six dot three, zoning amendment pertaining to the flood plain, federally mandated update to flood plain district, FP, Article six, section twenty-two dash thirty-four. Planning Board to review and decide whether or not to petition City Council for ordinance amendment.
Yes, it's, there's a federal requirement that Lemonster update, make these, the updates that are provided in this packet to the flood plain ordinance, section of the flood plain ordinance and our zoning ordinance. If we don't do this, we lose, we lose...
You're putting grant money in there?
We lose more than grant money. It's more severe than that, it's in the memo from Katie, email from Katie Payne.
Yeah.
We're gonna lose our, we're gonna risk being suspended for the National Flood Insurance Program.
That's bad.
It's really bad. So we're pretty much mandated federally to do this, and they've been kind enough to draft it for us the way that needs to be. You can see it in your packet, I put it in color for you, so you can see where the changes were made and the comments that were in there. There's a lot of it.
Okay, okay.
And we can go through it, but if you really have more questions, I'd rather have...
Does this need a hearing anyway?
This is just to have Elizabeth...
This is a hearing.
This is just to get it started to petition City Council. The motion would be to have Elizabeth petition this...
So moved, second.
Just, yeah, I mean...
And that's the start.
This is what, it's spelling out what's mandatory.
It's gotta happen by July eighth, so if we don't start it now, we might not meet that deadline.
Let's keep it going.
I hear you.
Okay, roll call.
We have a motion on the table.
Okay, we have a motion on the table by Paul, seconded by Patrick. Roll call, vote please.
Roll call, vote. Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
John SZA.
Yes.
Tom Kerrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Boyer.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes. Six dot four, zoning amendment pertaining to battery storage systems, Article one, section twenty-two dash four, definition section, Article three, table of uses, section twenty-two dash seventeen. Planning Board to review and decide whether or not to petition City Council for ordinance amendment.
Okay, when I drafted this agenda, I got word from the mayor that he wanted a legal opinion on this before we move forward, and so I did draft language, but I didn't give it to you because the legal opinion's not back yet.
So we'll take it.
So we're gonna have to wait until a future meeting.
And it didn't fit anywhere else on any other business uses for that area? Didn't just fit in the word, battery storage, that's the place on Lancaster Street.
We have two that we already approved, but we also have a new zoning ordinance that says if it's not spelled out in the table of uses, it's prohibited, and this is non-use that's spelled out in our table of uses. So the legal attorney's gonna check and see if it can fall under a different category, or if there's any way we can allow it as a new use, or if we have to change zoning in order to make that happen. So I reached out about a week ago, they haven't got back to me yet.
That sounds good.
And we've already approved two of these.
We've already approved two, but the zoning changed to where it says, if it's not on the table of uses, it's a prohibited use. So we had, did have a zoning change since those two were approved.
Okay.
So I don't know how that weighs in, we're waiting on the council.
Well, it's the mayor checking it, so it's a continuation. Let's just add it to Communications at the next meeting, and see if he's got any words to whisper for us. Well, that would be my motion, but I'm not...
We don't need a motion.
Yeah, it's just a communication.
Yeah.
So on to the seven point...
Okay, Director's Report, seven dot, oh.
A lot of things, but they're brief. We're trying to update the subdivision application.